Carl Fandrich?
Here.
Laurel Metzis?
Yes.
Robert Fradman? Kelly Smith?
Yes.
Officials?
Yes.
Gary Sutton?
Richard.
I am here. Richard Irwin? Maurice Stuber? Diane Williams?
Yes.
David Porter?
Here.
And if you could please note that Michael West, our attorney, is also here. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
Americans to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's all right, we can stand.
Glad to see you here, you're good.
Oh, thank you.
I can stand as well if you want.
Sit sideways, sit sideways.
Okay, I guess we're good to go. Before we start, I think it's important that I make a statement before we get into the privilege of the floor and the rest of the meeting. We could appreciate it, yeah. We were requested by Mr. Ruckel last Thursday to... no, we weren't requested, we were told he was going to livestream the meeting. Okay? We don't have any objection to that. But he gave us very little notice. And it says right in the open meeting laws, the town has a right to put together certain regulations and processes, if the processes apply. But, that's fine, we would like to do that, we would like to understand the process. We're not opposed at all to the livestreaming of the meeting. So I asked Mr. Ruckel, I think it was Thursday, no, maybe it was Saturday morning, to please hold off, and we would get together and have a meeting to discuss how we were going to do this. Mr. Ruckel responded that he didn't agree that he had asked me about this in January of 2020.
Correct.
It's two years ago, and this law wasn't even in place. That didn't give... I'm speaking. And frankly, the fact that this town board unanimously decided that we should push it out a month, it's not a big deal, we never had it before, all of a sudden, we've got to have it now. Problem is that we needed to do this, but there's a bigger issue anymore. It transcends this whole thing with the streaming. Much bigger issue. You've got an elected board of five people here who are charged by the voters, the citizens of this town. To run the town, make the laws, which we do, run the meetings, collect the taxes, set the budget, and for this to go over anybody else for that matter, it's just not you for them, to feel that they could say, "I don't agree and I'm going to do it," frankly is arrogant and it takes a lot of law.
It's the law.
Uh-uh. It's the law.
You're breaking the law.
I'm not discussing this with you. And if you do have an issue, that's fine, I respect that.
I cited the law to you, you omitted the part of the law that said it was legal for me to do this.
Anyway.
So let's be fair, I share all the laws with Matt and with everyone.
Very good, very good. Matt?
You know you're breaking the law.
And Matt Ward has set the... required it, and we will ask the town attorney if we're being unreasonable here in a mall, okay? But for somebody to decide that they're not going to do this because they disagree, I mean, that's just, that's unbelievable. Unbelievable. Now, if the person disagrees, has a grievance, and they may, they probably do. There are avenues to pursue those grievances within the state or the other body, maybe the open, the open government, whatever. And that's the way to do it, not just the law that I'm going to do it anyway, because that is arrogant and it's a total disrespect, not just to the board, who cares? It's a total disrespect to the people of the town of Colsville that elected these five people to run the town. Nobody's above that, and this is what we're getting right now. So I am going to ask the town attorney, to do, oh, I, that we are threatening saying we responded, yes, for one month.
This board has the right to set reasonable rules and regulations. It certainly allows the people to record meetings when they're by tape recorders, cameras, but there's certainly no reason why this board can't take one month. And I saw your response to this gentleman asking for that one month, and that it would probably start in next one. And then I saw his reply back with all kinds of case law. The bottom line is, this board has every right to do what it's doing. You're being reasonable, you're totally within the law. So, you're not denying them, you're just supposed to hold them. That's my opinion, that you're totally within your rights of doing what you do. Here.
So the question, Fred, is, will you show respect to the town and the board? Shut it down, and we will get together...
You are breaking the law. You are breaking the law. You showed me precedent, because I showed you all the case law.
I am advising the board...
Bill Federice cited a portion of the law that says you guys can have a meeting and all that, he omitted part one that said I have granted permission from New York to do this. You, if you read it, then you read it too, he cited section two, omitting section one, which granted permission.
I am speaking to the board, board has every right to do what it's doing, you're not violating any laws, you're not violating the spirit of any laws...
The board did not call a special session?
Excuse me. A gentleman's speaking. The board is not violating any laws, you're not violating the spirit of any laws, you have the right to set any reasonable rules and regulations for your board in handling of your meetings, that's it. Now, this gentleman may not agree, and that's mine, everybody certainly has their opinion, so that's my opinion, that's, I'm your legal counsel.
Thank you.
So, the offer still stands, that we'll meet with you and set up an appropriate process, you can do the streaming as soon as we have a process, but I don't think that is unreasonable. I just ask you to respect people in this town that voted for us as well as the board.
Am I allowed to speak?
We'll work with you.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah.
I provided 724 days' notice that I was going to do this, I provided an outline demonstrating exactly what equipment was involved in doing this, what was necessary, that I was incurring all costs, and the town had no cost. Two full years' notice. You're saying I gave you short notice, I gave two years' notice. The pandemic has only gotten worse, we're in the height of it right now in Skahari in terms of infection rates, we all know that, that's why we're wearing masks. People want to tune in remotely. Counties and towns all over the country are doing this, I don't understand the apprehension towards public health. Now, you guys can cite the laws as you see them fit, but I know the laws, and I understand, Mr. West, that you are siding with them, but respectfully, I think you are disregarding the law. Secondly, I am following the law, I'm within my rights to record a meeting, I'm not doing anything, you are making this obtrusive. I came in, I'd be quiet, sit here and do nothing, and just do what I had to do, and you shut down the internet so that I couldn't even stream it. You took the proactive measure to shut down the internet so that I couldn't share this meeting with the townspeople. How do you think that's okay? How many people emailed you today saying, "Thank you, Mr. Federice, for allowing us to have this streaming meeting?" Because multiple people CC'd me on emails they sent you, saying that they were really happy about it. So, so if people are saying they're happy, and the Facebook community on the Wyndham, Prattsville, Gilboa conversations page, they're all happy, people were enthused that we were going to do this, I don't understand the apprehension, I'm trying to keep people safe, stop community spread, allow more people to participate. There's no cost to the town, you're not having to input anything, I'm doing it all for free, so Carrie and everyone else can have an accurate recording of what happens in these meetings. Because, to be fair, as Brenda pointed out in her final statement, and as several people have pointed out, meeting minutes are not necessarily demonstrative of exactly what happens in these meetings, they omit things by coincidence, and that happens not once, not twice, but many times. So, for Carrie to do her job properly, what is wrong with her having a recording that she could reference, that she could always know is real, and if someone said, "What happened in that meeting?", she could say, "Hold on, let me give you the clip." Because that's what efficiency is, that's what I'm trying to bring. The Colsville website is all about that, this was going to feed into the website, people were tuning in tonight to the Colsville website to see this meeting, and you shut down the townspeople. So yes, we have a room full here, but there were more people going to be streaming it tonight at home than there are in this room, and you took that away from those townspeople. So you're trying to mean I'm being disrespectful to the town, but is that respectful that in the middle of a pandemic at 12 degrees, when people are sick, that I'm trying to help them stay home, stay warm, and stay safe, and still attend the meeting, and you think I'm doing something bad and malicious? I'm paying for everything. It's thousands of dollars that you are not spending. Nobody in this room is having this money.
None of this has anything to do with the dollar ordeal of what they're serious about. This has to do with the fact, all we wanted to do is sit with you and discuss how it's going to be done.
Absolutely, I wanted to do the same, Mr. Federice has cut me off for two years I've been trying to do this.
And that's why, now, if...
It's his fault, not mine.
Before I saw the email that he sent back to you that said we would sit with you and talk with you very soon, and make it so... I don't care if it was after 22 years, Fred, this is what transpired the last three or four days, and you were asked to just hold off for one month. None of us are opposed to the town all night, everything we want here.
Then why are we making any ordeal against us at all? There is no...
You didn't respond by, "Yes, we'll have that meeting and then we'll start it next month."
Because I cited the two laws. Mr. Federice is breaking the law, I'm sorry, with all due respect, I am within my legal rights to do what I'm doing, and you guys are making it into something that it's not. I'm trying to help the town.
No, see, I worry about whether or not you are really trying to help the town, Fred. You know, your credibility here is not as high as you think it is.
Oh, yeah.
You sat in one of our meetings a couple of years ago with an audio recorder that no one else knew about until you were called out on it. When you put up this town of Colsville website, you called it Town of Colsville, but you're the only administrator to that town of Colsville website. When you were asked to remove something that this board did not approve, you refused.
So if I told some of you to remove something from that, you're also...
It's not there.
This is really like two-sided, because you're telling me, you told me to remove something from technically my private property, and from...
Right, you have a website, not the town of Colsville website, thank you.
Because I didn't listen, it was shunned, but other people in the room here can do the same, and it doesn't matter. Firstly, the New York Post is not owned by New York, the New York Times, guess what, New York State, they have no access to, monitor or change the New York Times. Do they disclaim on there that we're not owned by New York State?
That has a lot of relevance to this.
Okay, you know, the point is that the Colsville website is an experience, we created a multi-page experience for people to learn about our town, how could you discount value to that?
Is the town of Colsville turning the eyes of Fred Ruckel?
Um, you are... You're totally off base.
You don't take something off that the town board doesn't agree with after you've been asked to, because that is your website, that is no longer the town of Colsville.
I'm sorry, you're referencing Bill Federice telling me to remove the statement about the Paris Accord from 2016, when Donald Trump removed us from the Paris Accord, and I put on there that we supported the Paris Accord, and Federice said, "Remove it," and I said, "Well, we support the Paris Accord." Okay, so we are all in the Paris Accord, so...
Who is we, who is we? Right, the town of Colsville, that's wrong.
Many people, look, this groaning circle is your circle, there are a lot of people in this town that really care about the town.
But you can't talk for anybody in the town, Fred.
First thing... I don't want to talk, Fred, you're just like...
Guys, guys, let's bring it down a little. You come here and you harass us every time you come here.
Harass?
You harass me at my place of work. I'm tired of it, Fred.
Harass?
Yes, harass!
You guys are a class...
When I'm working...
I don't harass anybody about anything.
Bullshit! Wish this was on the screen. But anyway.
Yeah, if you shut it down, it would've been great.
Yeah, well, we get together a gentleman, we can work it out, and you can do it next month.
I sent you an email in November asking you to get together, and you said to me specifically, and I quote, "I'll think about it."
Yeah.
Well, that was in November, you never thought about it, and the pandemic got worse, so we had to make a decision.
Thank you, Fred. Town attorney, do you have any word on this?
Just move ahead with your agenda.
Okay. You have, you already got a lot of time, but that would begin to take off. No, he asked for five minutes, he's going to get five minutes. You want, you still need the five minutes?
Sure, absolutely. Well, as many of you have heard, no one walks our livestream, however, the goal is to bring the town together, there is quite a divided town right now. If it's not evident, that is what's seen here right now, I don't know what else is. However, everyone in town has a right to attend these meetings, whether they're in person or at home, with the pandemic raging as it is right now, people really should be afforded the opportunity to sit home and watch the meeting. I don't understand any apprehension towards it, however, we can sit and we can talk, I am more than happy to. I was the one that extended an olive branch to you, Mr. Federice, asking specifically for that. You did a, you denied him that right in November, and then I wrote to you again saying, "We got to do this," because, look, everybody's saying in-person meetings should be canceled because of the pandemic is so hot. Today's Skahari County Health Department posted that we are 200% higher this week than last week. This right here could be a super-spreader event. I'm trying to help stop community spread with allowing all of the community people, people that are weekenders, people that live down in the city or Long Island, to be able to log in and watch what's happening in this town meeting. I don't understand why you don't want it, we can meet about it, but to take away people's rights to be part of the town is not right. I'm sorry, just my turn to do the floor. And, and further to say, I am harassing, I come here and I present at these meetings different things to help the town. You can't like me when it's good for you and not when it's not good for you. Bill Federice used to be my champion and send emails to the county how great our website was, Colsville has the best website of all of the towns. I have the emails, I forward them to you, Bill, you've said, you've praised what I've done for the town, and then when it wasn't convenient, you then said, "My website is not official, it's not..." Bill, it helps everyone, it helps, for you to discount that we created a place for people to experience Colsville anywhere in the world is ridiculous.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, did anybody else sign up for privilege of the floor?
Not prior to the meeting starting, did anyone else sign up after several people?
Okay, let's move along then.
Why is that tape on, Fred? Excuse me? Are you taping this?
Recording them over there?
I'm taping that small tape, you have a small tape there, about... Yes, absolutely.
He can do an audio.
I can do audio or video, I can do whatever, I just can't, you know?
You can do the video?
I can do audio and video, if I want to do audio and video. I'm not getting anybody but the town board in my video, so it's not disruptive of anything. Public officials are the only people seen in my video.
All right. On advice of town council.
Please, please go with the agenda.
Okay. You have the December 13th board meeting minutes? I trust you had the chance to look at them, and if there are any comments or suggested changes, now is the time, before we vote. Okay, I do have a couple, nothing major. Our friends here, the Mullins, are listed as Susan Muller and Sean Muller, we need that changed to Muller, changing R to N, please. And on page two, the...
Glad to see you down on the side of the county.
Okay, number nine, town business, letter F, CBD Project Bank Clean, "clean" is spelled incorrectly. Yeah, it's not "tal," no. No, it's "tal" I P N. Nope, that's in the body, which says CBD Project Bank Clean. No, it's L E I.
Just make sure it's...
All right, all right, take a look at that, maybe it's not an issue. With that aside, if the clerk can change those, the board agrees, those are minor things. Okay, I don't hear anybody else, I'll take a motion to accept the December 13th board meeting minutes. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? So, Carrie. The assessor's report, did we get something?
Dear town board members, happy to be here to all. The end of December started out with an executive order from the governor with a report of the order pertaining to the renewal of exemptions for senior financial tax exemptions and the exemptions for disabled with low incomes. The governor made municipalities the option to waive their requirements to provide the assessor with the signed renewal form and supporting documents. In doing so, the assessor would automatically renew the exemptions based on the prior year's income, since this is an income-based exemption. Although the exemption is automatically renewed, the resolution will also allow the assessors to make changes to the exemptions due to certain changes of ownership as stated in the executive order. It is my recommendation tonight that the town board approve the resolution for this waiver. If approved, the assessor does not have to email, or does not have to mail out the renewal notices. I have not yet mailed these notices out, but if the town does not approve the resolution, then I must get that in the mail this week. I have mailed out the agricultural exemption renewal forms. With the forms, I also am updating files and requiring a copy of the current lease for owners, they may, owners may have... And requiring a copy of the current lease, an owner may have with a form. For the owner's convenience, I enclosed a blank copy of the New York State lease form that is required to accompany the exemption for those who have long-term plans. They will need to provide the 2020 F with their tax form to return a grocery receipt totaling the required dollar amount. To mail out the exemption, I took advantage of the county clerk mailroom, I provided the bill to the clerk just to save a little on the cost of postage. I am looking forward to preparing for the 2023...
Retail.
Retail. This should be very interesting with the higher-priced sales in the last couple of years, since they're the main store.
And there's some action that we're going to take as part of this meeting later on that she recommended to the start of the year. But in the meantime, if I can get a motion to accept...
I'll take a motion.
We have a motion from Kelly, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye, and opposed, so, Carrie. Code enforcement, did we hear anything?
So, code enforcement did in there, yes.
Is there anything worth reading? No. Anybody want to see the code enforcement report? And I have something to talk about that too, later in the evening. So, motion to accept the code enforcement officers' report. I'll go with Lori. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So, Carrie. Town clerk's report, this is your first one, go for it.
There were $310 in dispersments paid to the general fund.
Excuse me, sorry, Carrie, can you, can you ask them to please keep it down? I can't hear what's going on because they're so loud back there. Sorry, Carrie, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I couldn't hear you.
So there was $310 in dispersments paid to the general fund, five building permits and 17 sewer systems, sewer systems.
Okay. All those in favor of accepting the town clerk's report for first one? We have a motion from Lori, I think I heard a second from you. All those in favor say aye, so, Carrie. Sewer district operators' report.
West Colsville wastewater treatment facility monthly update report. This is a monthly update of West Colsville wastewater treatment facilities. These are the highlights in your sewer district for the previous month. The average daily flow for the month of November was 4,904 gallons a day. The generator transfer switch is not working, Pinkley Power is working on repairing the transfer switch. We received an update from Pinkley Power Systems, who informed us that the part has been ordered and will be here mid-February. Pump station one has had two pump failures due to a buildup on the pumps. To determine the source of the grease, we will be checking all septic tanks for signs of grease and operation. Spare pumps have been ordered to replace the pumps we've changed. LBDV operator Donald Cairns has taken over the day-to-day operations at West Colsville plant. We will be pleased to answer any questions you can have about the West Colsville wastewater treatment facility. You can always contact us by phone, at web8, 95, 4396, by email, or in person, and we will be there.
If I could just add to that, when he dropped some things off this morning, if they'd stopped by and he said that they were going to check several of the, I guess, septic tanks or whatever, because it seems like there's a new ordinate amount of oil and grease that is working its way over to the main, pretty sort of... We have no idea, I mean, restaurants have grease cats, but we don't have any restaurants, what we do, we have one that's hooked up, but Waterfall House, and that hasn't been operational in years. So, it's a big mystery, so they, when he dropped off some things for me, and they were headed out, they're determined to find the source. So I don't know how to do that, but that's what we're praying for. Okay. Motion to accept the wastewater...
Can you make that motion?
We have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Okay. Ivy Supers report.
This month, we did some more shoulder ditching and shoulder repair, and we experienced several wind issues with a lot of freezing rain, everybody knows. We moved all the flags and found them all to be trashed, they all had to be thrown out. A lot of cleaning, picking up and organizing is done throughout, in and around the garage throughout December. Got it this well. Truck 203, the 2018 International is completed from the dealer and it's back, hooked up, ready to file. 201, 2006 International is hooked up, standard and file. 202, the 2011 four-by-four international, ready for snow. 211, the 2000 Sterling four-by-four, ready for snow. 204, the 2024, waiting for parts for the spreader that just got done this morning, that new. The new Ford F550, it will be 206, is in, connected, getting a spreader installed right now. None of the big trucks have wings on yet, till the shoulders get lit and hard. December 29th, the snow file on 201 dug in bad on Cook Road, and again on South Mountain, assessing quick repairs to the roads, temporary repairs to the roads, and major repairs to the snow file. Proper permanent repair done, proper permanent repairs done on January 5th. I did that backwards. The temporary repairs were done on January 5th, and we will do permanent repairs come spring. All right, last month, I wasn't here, we do a definite man... Alright, last month, I wasn't here, do a definite family, and I missed out on the reactions of leaving my comments from last month about the proposals that I had for increasing the full-time position to four dollars an hour, and instituting, re-instituting a labor's position or a non-CDL position for eighteen dollars an hour. And I'm guaranteeing that the union will not interfere with any upscaling at all. And there is enough money in the twenty twenty-two budget, highway budget, more than enough to raise wages and put on the four dollars an hour and full-time, for all present full-time people. I'd like to hear the discussions I had.
I have, it's in the agenda, I have a making of a proposal for the board. I think you might even like it, so we'll get to that, so.
Now this, the other than the last month's meeting, that's kind of the outline of what the crew's been doing. I've been doing quite a bit around the garage and the highway myself. And most of it shouldn't have had to have been done, but it was, and I since May, no, since June fifteenth, when I came back to work for the town, the only reason I did was because I felt the town deserved a whole hell of a lot more than what they had. I've been very careful not to throw under the bus previous highway administration. And I think I've done pretty good with it, but it's time, it's more than time. I got a list of items that I have found that were purchased wrong way. I can't say illegally, but it was because somebody didn't know any better. Minor things, some of them, but a box of grade-two bolts, which grade-two bolts shouldn't even be in the building, they're not even they're garbage, and then there was a lot of grade-five and stainless steel fasteners, which aren't strong enough. We stocked nothing but, I wouldn't stock anything with grade-eight bolts. I found ten rolls of sixteen-gauge primary wire, all various colors, pretty colors, and it's copper-clad aluminum. Aluminum was banned for use in electric in a home since the nineteen sixties, it's too inflexible to be put in your wall. What the hell are we going to put that in a vehicle, especially a truck? A fifty-five gallon barrel of five W thirty motor oil. Rated S. S-rated, API rating was S, which means spark ignition, is not qualified for a diesel engine. And it was labeled with a magic marker for use in two oh four only, which is a diesel truck. They bought a whole barrel of oil for a diesel truck, it was non-diesel rated. And it did unfortunately get put in the truck once, but as soon as we got the right, correct replacement oil, I relabeled it. We still have a truck that we can use the oil in, so as long as it lasts another twenty years, we'll, we have a barrel of oil.
What happened, oil spill?
I found two Firestone tires, brand-new steer tires, they're model T eight nineteen. Twelve R twenty-two five steer tires, rating, weight rating seventy-three thousand nine hun- seventy-three hundred ninety pounds each. Uh, they were bought from Rick's Tires November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, seven hundred and forty-two dollars. I was told that the driver wanted to eliminate the super singles on his truck. And then moved with leave the truck with the front axle rating reduced to fourteen thousand seven hundred eighty pounds from twenty thousand, totally insufficient for plowing weight on a ten-wheeler truck. Also, there was two wheels bought, I have no idea where, I haven't found bills for that. They're not, they won't work on either one of the trucks, they are purchased wrong. I don't know what they paid, I'm sure it's over there lots a piece. I found two signs, quote, "tree work," which we never had before, and we always use men working signs for anything. And those signs are sixty to seventy dollars a piece. Four town maintenance end signs, we already have several of them in stock. Two dead-end signs, which are antiquated, recommended sign now according to the manual, is no outlet. I found a case of air brake alcohol. We have no vehicle with alcohol injector, our trucks all have air grates. Case of dry gas, gas line, injector cleaner. I wouldn't use it in a diesel, even though the label says it can be used in a diesel, I'm not sure is any diesel manufacturer would condone the use of it. Two four-by-four foot pieces of quarter-inch steel, which I was told were dropped off in the yard by the company outside during a storm and let there rust, and then moved, rested against the salt shed next to a half-inch sheet of, a half-sheet of half-inch-thick steel plate moved from the old garage. The snow plow on two eleven last year was replaced with, twice it was replaced last year, with a piece of crap that was given to the town. And we rebuilt a plow that we already had in stock this year and put it on. The plow on two oh five was severely damaged, needed rebuilding, which we've already done. That was damaged when they were pushing snow back, and they got the truck stuck in the Beaver Hill Bridge, got wedged in the bridge between the two guys. And the two oh one snow plow had a new cutting edge installed last winter, I don't know when, but it was all done wrong. Recently replaced the cutting edge and shoes again, that's quite an expense, I didn't figure the price out. That was all stuff that shouldn't have been done previous, and it's stuff that we've got to deal with now, I don't know, I haven't even checked yet on the tires. If we can, the dealer will take the tires back, one of them they did mount, so he may not take them back. One he probably could sell as new, I don't know. Barrel oil was uncapped and open. Some of the stuff we can peddle in an auction maybe. And that's, as far as I've found so far. But I do have one more thing, that is, I think it's high time for me to be a bit selfish. Because of my age, I receive no benefits from the town. The town's a great place to work and get decent benefits. But the federal government doesn't require employers to give health insurance to anybody sixty-five years and old. And I feel that I should receive the insurance buyout benefit of two thousand dollars, which is in a contract and the health insurance policy for all full-time employees. And I requested and was refused because of the, because the policy, this was in twenty nineteen, when I was superintendent prior. I requested and was refused the buyout, because the policy stated that any full-time employee who chooses to opt out of receiving health insurance will receive the two thousand dollar buyout. I was told I didn't exactly opt out, I was forced out by Medicare. This year, a former employee was given the buyout after sixty-five years of age, I feel I should too. I was told that they didn't want to discuss this and bring my dirty laundry out in the public, and I feel wrong. Bill, don't give me that, well, you told me that you didn't want to hear this.
No, I said we would discuss it amongst ourselves and come back to you.
You said you didn't want to bring it out to the public, you wanted to do it in private. But anyway, that's all I got to say.
Alright, let me just, you done?
I'm done.
Okay, let me just say one or two things, because I think we're a bit misleading. We found it hard to, somebody to opt out of something they couldn't opt into. That was our logic, but I think we're, we're getting something here. You came to us and said, I have this extra expense now, I think it was B and B Medicare. Well, I said to you, well, how much is that? And it came out to four hundred and two dollars a quarter. We, as a board, gave that to you back in two thousand nineteen, we did, and all was hunky-dory. After you left, and we're going to put this out here, after you left, you filed the claims with the.
When I left, I was still working.
No, no, this came after, alright, well, finished after you left. Anyway, and I had Mike look at it, and frankly, your claim was denied by the state, because it wasn't. There was no, there was no, what was it, P M?
It was denied by the state because the federal government doesn't guarantee health insurance.
Right. And but then we picked up an additional four hundred and two dollars, and then I said to you, I guess it was about three or three weeks ago, something like that, I'll talk to the board about seeing if we can replicate what we did before, which you accepted.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about it. When we talk to the board about financial matters, it has to be done in front of the public.
Yeah, absolutely, because then the board members one-on-one talk about all kinds of things, because we need to prepare for the board, not here at first class, but that's, that's all secondary. What I am saying is, you also made a comment, you insist on doing this, that the, that we pay ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year towards health insurance, that's, that was on the high side, but that's what you said, so why can't you get that? Isn't that what you said?
I was getting at, why can't I get the two thousand dollar buyout?
Well, the four hundred and two dollars plus the inflation since then, is almost the five hundred dollars. A quarter, which is two thousand dollars a year. I don't know if we're really arguing over, over a lot, if this is what the board wants to do, that was my idea.
Well, I feel I'm arguing about principle, I get zero benefits, I don't belong to the retirement system because I'm in the retirement system. I don't get health insurance, which is the biggie that the town provides to its full-time employees. And I am certainly a full-time employee.
You want to add to the conversation we had with, with Hank when you first came back?
I know you're the same board, that's the only thing, you are the same board that I, I left here on bad terms before.
Yeah, but we were, I'll say for a minute, we were very pleased that you came back and bailed us out of what you call a very bad situation. We, we, I'm not going to miss words on that, thank you.
And that, well, how about giving me what I'm due? I'm, I'm due what, the benefit of health insurance, so I can't have it due to the fact that I'm on, so why not give me the two thousand dollar buyout? It's a simple thing.
And what did I say to you? I said, you were skeptical, I said, why don't you let me talk to the board?
Yes.
And I mentioned it to one of the board members here, I didn't mention it to the others, but in principle, I was supporting it.
I know you said you were supporting it.
So, I said I was going to advocate for it, did I not say that?
We got the board here now, so.
Yes.
I know everything I've ever brought up to the board, it's always tabled until the board gives us the look, and we'll look and talk about it, and then it gets discussed on the phone and the internet and whatnot, and it never gets brought up in meetings, and I want to hear the discussion. And I really would like to know more of a reason why I feel that I'm not eligible to get the buyout.
Because you can't buy out of what you can't buy into. That doesn't mean that we call it something else and find something, as we gladly did when you brought it to us last week when you were supporting me in your first time. Does anybody have a different recollection of that?
No.
No, that's.
What we did, we gave you the four hundred and two dollars because that's the number you brought to us, that it was costing you.
It's the number you asked for, the town asked for, Bill asked for.
Right, but that's the number you provided, because that's the number, I'm assuming you gave us the number you were paying for the parts, uh, A and, or B and D for the Medicare, I don't know the part numbers exactly, thank you. But those, that was the number, so it turned out that would have been ninety-eight dollars per quarter, less than the two thousand dollar buyout. The reason we didn't go with the buyout was because the buyout is for someone who is eligible for our benefits and chooses not to because, uh, as in Phillip's case, I think he's on with his parents. Um, you know, there's somebody who doesn't want them, has them for some other reason, their spouse maybe works for somebody who has better benefits than what we offer. Those are people that are eligible and back out of it, and when they back out, we offer that, uh, buyout. In your case, you're not eligible for our insurance.
Why do you think so?
Well, I get no benefits, that's an opinion. That, well, that's what I was advised, I mean, if you prove to me something else, I'll be glad to revisit it.
I spoke to the union, I said they would like to be part of that plan, and I know you were probably going to say, I just want a buyout, I guess. And he did not give me an answer, flat out, he says, I don't think so, let me go to our benefits specialist. I followed up after you and I spoke.
Well, that's because the town provides the wrong insurance for the guys, they provide crap insurance that doesn't meet the standards.
That was the union, well, standards for who?
For, for Medicare, why can't, why can't the town provide insurance that, that I can get?
Because we are under a union contract, and that's what the union negotiated and the employees accepted, period. But we're arguing over a small amount of money, I know you said it's principal, but we're arguing, I guess, if you just, I'm just using inflation, about, maybe it's four thirty, four forty. We're not arguing about a huge difference.
No, we're not.
Okay, I'm glad we both agree on that. I don't have anything else to add to the conversation, does anybody else? Do we want to consider it, or do we want to have some discussions on this and work in earnest? I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't know what the right number is, between that and.
He could probably provide us with the number that he's paying for those, uh, parts on the Medicare, again, like he did last time. And, uh, yeah, we would, we would consider it, more than likely, we'd probably say yes, thank you, you're welcome. So, I'm just not simply you're saying I'm not eligible for the benefit, because it's, I'm sixty-five years old.
That's been established, that's been established, you're not eligible for the benefit, so we're trying to find something else to replace it. You can't get the benefit, alright, that's a moot point, you're not getting the benefit, they won't give it to you. I don't, I don't know how to say it in any other way, so I offered the opportunity to do what you suggested to us last time. And we will have to do the same thing, but I cannot give you benefits if you're not eligible for it. You're not, whether it's right or wrong, doesn't make a difference. That's the union contract. You're not a member of the union, but they're willing to extend it to non-union members, because the more people they get, the better it is. But, I, I can get it if I wanted, I'm too old.
Oh, you've got full-time insurance, you're a town employee, and because of that, you get, and after two years, you will get insurance for the rest of your life.
What would you like me to do about it?
You're sitting in judgment of me not giving me my two thousand dollar buyout.
I just told you, it's close to two thousand dollars, okay? Come back with a number, please, and we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it and vote it on the next meeting. Now, I want to go back to what you said about the, because I think you did a good thing talking about the prior highway administration, because there's a few things that bothered me, and since you prepped it up, I'm going to bring up some things. I got off the phone with Larry today. Your predecessor left such a disaster in terms of, and he administrated for it, which he had a bigger burden on. He just felt it was beneath him, he should be out on the road, looking for gear, the odds. But I can't make headspace, I've spent weeks trying to figure out what we owe them for, I guess it's like late two thousand and twenty-two.
September. September.
To the time you came.
Yeah, from September until, September 2020 until August, the last delivery we got.
Yeah, something like that. So anyway, this is not some big company far away that we, uh, don't trust and we've got, we've got to get proof. So I'm going to talk to Mike, or Michael. About coming to a settlement with Larolais, they're a local business, small company, I trust them. They have a number, and I spoke to Bill and his wife tonight for a meeting. And I would like to, unless the board feels strongly, I shouldn't pursue this, come to an agreement, here's what we say we owe you, it looks good to us, both sign a document and say we're clear. Okay, is that acceptable practice? Mike? So that's, and that's, uh, part of the, I'm sure there's some other things out there that we've discovered, but that's part of the legacy of what you inherited. Another thing is that we had a Christmas, and I'm getting, put this all on the table. We had a Christmas time storm. And because Mr., because your predecessor didn't like somebody who was a local contractor that sold materials, not all materials he could get. He decided he was going to send trucks or have trucks come down all the way from Skahari. At a premium because he didn't like the local supplier. That's bogus and that's, I, I'm not a lawyer, but that really puts him in a vulnerable position. And I'm not gonna go any further other than what you just told me. And what I know, to see what recourse we have. I, maybe nothing, but we'll have that conversation. And I thank you for breaking that up. Maybe he also doesn't know what it's about that. Anything else to say?
Nope.
We have a motion to extend the tax collector's report.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll take that.
I will get that one.
We have a second. We have a second to say. All, all those in favor say aye, and you oppose, so Kevin. Your first historian.
Okay, the annual report for the town historian, myself, Abby Riddle. As I have been the town historian for only eight months, I do not have a great deal to report. In this time period, I have received two or three phone calls from a woman in Ohio who claims to have roots here and asked me to look up birth and marriage records. I was able to help her with some, but I also referred her on to the Gilboa Town Historian as I felt some of the information she was looking for to be found there. In the fall of 2021, I had the pleasure of visiting two of our town maintained cemeteries with Sean, I'm sorry, Sean, Mohan, Mohan.
Mohan.
Uh, regarding upcoming restoration he hopes to do in the future. It was most interesting to see some familiar names and the brevity of the lifespans back then. I took many pictures, which I will move from my phone at some point onto hard copies. It was very educational, although I don't know how much I will remember listening to Sean as to how and what materials were used in making the stones and how he plans to go about repairing them. He was very respectful of those who were laid to rest in these hills. A tribute to your mother. And I wondered about their lives and families and what they died from. There is a statewide historians convention being held in Kingston in the spring, which I hope to attend. I have been in touch with Lenhamstown Historian upon joining me and will probably reach out to Gilboa and Jefferson historians as well. I also have an idea for a small exhibit in the future, possibly here in the town hall or the new art gallery cafe next door of quilts in Combsville. Quilts tell stories. And although many of our founding fathers and mothers have passed on, I am hopeful that descendants might have some of their quilts tucked away and would be willing to display them. We have a few very talented quilters living here right now. And quilts from the 1990s and present would be welcome and displayed also. So just a possibility, ask your relatives, have any old quilts or even parts of quilts. This is a conclusion of my annual report, 2021, to the Combsville Town Board. At this point, I'm sure I will be pulled out of order, but I just want to make a statement that I, as a former supervisor of this town, I am extremely saddened and disappointed in the divisiveness that has arisen in the last few years here. We have got to get it together or we will go nowhere. You have a man here, I don't know all the facts, but I know he rescued us at a time that we were in great need. He should be compensated and thanked.
Can you give a summary of your report to Carrie and Kevin? Okay. Uh, okay, uh, oh, they're not getting out of there. Tax collector's report, it's not in there, but.
Diane, a little louder, please. I'm sorry, I held the mic.
I inflicted $233,000, I put $79 in.
All right, can you get a motion to extend the tax collector's report? Yeah, I'm watching, we have a second. All those in favor? Say aye. Aye, okay.
Sorry, just a motion on the historian's report.
Yes. Always did. All right.
Supervisor, I'll make the motion on the.
And second? What was the favor? Sorry.
That's all right.
All right, supervisors can't even report, he's still pretty, but he has some things that he wants to talk about. Couple things that we talked about, and it's all about COVID. We may have heard that the county passed a resolution saying that we would not enforce the COVID type of regulations. It's very good feedback. Some people have their own reasons for the work. The issue that I created for the resolution was, you're giving us a ton of work. So we don't have the people, how do you expect us to do that? How do you expect us to go in there? Frankly, they wanted us to look in windows at restaurants and stores, that is completely bogus. But we don't have the people that can't even do the COVID work, never mind their public health work. I mean, I've got a lady over, not, not elsewhere. Not Middleburg, but she has a well that's contaminated by cow, by a person who had 28 cows on two acres of land right next to her house under the guise of right to farm. Well, the right to farm law in Middleburg does not cover that kind of practice. But her well has been contaminated with E. coli, 100 times the acceptable level. So that's the kind of thing, health department can't let slide, that's important. So that's another reason that they. Skahari County, at least we had, I'm proud of it, the board. We had the, we weren't afraid to let be known, some counties are not enforcing it, they're just not saying anything. Some counties are having a, uh, their county exec or their, my counterpart is the chairman of the board of supervisors or legislator, just come out with a proclamation. Now, we came out with a, a resolution, and I'm proud of the county for doing that. We just don't have the people to handle it. I mean, if they want to send people over, that's fine, send them over. You enforce it, it's your rule. All right, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about some good stuff, pretty good stuff. The county has promised, not the county, the state has promised kits, test kits. The state has promised masks. And can't make this up, first week, we were supposed to get two plane loans, I don't know where they were coming from, like, yes, they, sorry. Two plane loans were supposed, they were waiting, and Kennedy Air Force picked them up. Tens of thousands, maybe hundreds of thousands, they never showed up. So that really put a crepe on things, and they needed them for the schools to start their testing. So they ended up getting deliveries, um, January 1st. Somebody had to be at the school, both either at the schools to do testings, because they're doing intensive testing, which is all good things. But that left the counties with a limited number. So far, and this is insulting, but it's better than nothing. Skahari County got, I think it's 1,395 masks. The masks were good, but we're gonna be able to distribute those. We got 1,395 test kits. For the whole county, 29,000 people. So the, the plan was that we would distribute a certain amount to the towns and villages based on their population. That was the most equitable way to do that. I mean, I'd love to get with COVID skill, guess, but we're the second smallest town. We're not gonna get away with that. So I wanted to prove it. So we are getting a grand total. And I have to pick them up tomorrow. Well, no, a little bit better, 16. So I like to save a couple for Dave's guys, and that's part of it, essential workers. People outside, so maybe we'll have 10 to give out to the town. And by the way, there's two kits to a box, so you're not gonna break the box open. We're, we're not getting any this week. I go on the weekly call with the governors, and they're very good, the emergency management people, they're helping me. It's not their fault. But some other counties, they just rip them to pieces, and I really think that's unfair, because it is a fair fault. But we're getting more coming in, and we're told next week will be lean. Guess a little bit, it's better than zero. But I don't know what each town, or the town is wanting to test on. Any additional ones? So we'll have to find some way to, I mean, how do you equitably distribute five boxes to a town with a population of 687? I mean, not everybody wants them, but somebody suggested that we don't have it. Just put them on the table at town hall, we want some taste, they'll vaporize in seconds. That's not that difficult, presenting them pretty warm, same people come and pick them up. But Carrie, maybe we can have a little chat about, and I don't want to place a big burden on you either. Five boxes isn't a burden, but find some way to make sure somebody doesn't come back for seconds. So I'll talk to you about that on Wednesday. I'll pick them up tomorrow, and how do we get the word out? I do want to talk about something because, Fred, this isn't an option because there's a lot of people.
Well, that's it.
There's other people who feel, that feel the other way. The, the state has abandoned, they're still doing it for continuity, but the state has abandoned measuring infection rate. It's not a good metric. What you're doing is taking a sample of people who have come in with a sniffle or symptoms, of course, it's going to be higher. What they're doing now, and they've been doing it for several months, is doing a metric, which is the rate of infection per 100,000 people, obviously, or 31, 29,000, about a third of that. And we're one of the best in the state, which I'm proud to say. I didn't do much of it, other than be on the chair of the team, of the people that are actually in the trenches, under the battle of the war, they come. They work extremely hard, extremely hard. So it's not good, it is rampant, but it's, it could be even worse enough if in other places. All right, that was my supervisor's having report. Okay. Town business. I sent you the, you'll remember supervisor's statement today, I know. And I'm sure you had lots of time to read it in case today. So the question is, do you want, do you see anything in here that you want to question, or do you want to accept it? Do you move that special help put together? You're not moving, no one's moving. All those in, I only heard one person.
Need a motion?
Yes. Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie. Uh, let's talk about the code enforcement opening. We still have an opening, so we do have a gentleman who has signed up, sit down, this face. We have a gentleman who has, uh, we hired to be the interim code enforcement officer through the end of the quarter. Or sooner if he had, we filled the position, and he's interested in the position. And he looks like a pretty good guy, he's, his name is Rich Carroll, and I've already got a number of people who are interested. That are having things going on, we have to continue working with people, particularly with all the building permits that are going on. So he's already gotten calls from several people, he's working with them. He's also the code enforcement officer in Jefferson. He's also a DDP police officer who is, what's today? Okay, he's retiring in four days, or is that five days? And that's why this is a very good match, he comes highly recommended. That doesn't mean since we advertised, we're just gonna shut down this, and he knows this. So we'll probably, I know one, one that we received so far. There might be a couple of others that are right here and expressed interest. So we'll wait till we get enough applications and we'll go through the process. And what's good about having Rich doing it through, through the end of the quarter is that we get to see what he does, and then he gets to see what we do. So that's that, there's no real, uh, anything else to do on that. The planning board secretary. We have somebody, somebody that was interested in the position. And I think she's going to really work out well with the planning board, they don't eat very often, they've only met three times last year. But I'd like to nominate Cressa Dovig to be the planning board secretary. Do you have that, who's she?
No.
She was on Bull Hill Road, almost near the town line, on the left-hand side. Last name is Dovig, Cressa. She's originally from the Carroll Catsfield area. Her husband just retired as a corrections lieutenant, I think it was, over at Croxady Prison. She's got several kids in the school. But she seems like, walking through, she seems really good.
Point of order.
Yes?
Uh, could you please tell her the last name?
Certainly. D O V I G H.
Thank you.
And maybe I ought to give you the first name too. C R E S S A.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyway, it's a, it's a good position in the sense that they don't eat that much, who knows, maybe it'll be easier. I'm sure she's up to the task. Any questions or comments? Motion? You have a motion?
Yeah.
Second, we have a second. Kelly, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie. Okay, moving along. You have a resolution here that was provided to us by, uh, our assessor, Marie Stuber. And this is almost 100% plagiarized from the town of Middleburg. The one that they passed last year. What is it, what this is, is that the governor has issued an executive order saying that because of COVID and there's a disaster, that called emergency, disaster emergency of the entire state of New York, that the requirement that annually you reapply. that the requirement that annually you reapply for your star exemption, you don't need to do the renewal applications this year. We did this last year, this is not new. And it's probably a good thing, and, but a little twist to this, if the assessor has, uh, some suspicion or knowledge of the of the person having made any changes to their property, maybe put out an addition, built a shed, or has changed their residence, in other words, they don't live here anymore, maybe they're just weekenders. She can go in there and reassess them, just because they didn't apply, which I think is a really good thing. So, I'm talking a lot, could you read it, please? Please?
Town Council Resolution, Senior Citizen Renewal Waiver Resolution, introduced by William Federice. Whereas on December twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one, Governor Kathy Kamala issued Executive Order Number eleven dot one declaring a state disaster emergency for the entire state of New York. And whereas on said declaration was extended to include subdivisions seven, seven S and eight of section four-five-nine C of the real property tax law, and subdivisions five, five A, five B, five C, and six of section four-sixty-seven, which permits the governing body of an assessing unit to adopt a resolution directing the assessor to grant exemptions pursuant to such sections of the twenty-twenty-two assessment roll, thereby dispensing with the need for renewal applications from such persons, and further dispensing the requirement for assessors to mail renewal applications to such persons. And whereas the town of Consville is desirous in adopting such resolutions, while also allowing the assessor to require a renewal application to be filed when he or she has reason to believe that an owner who qualifies for the exemption on twenty-twenty-one assessment roll may have since changed his or her primary residence, added another owner to the deed, transferred the property to a new owner, or dies, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Consville, Town Council, is authorized to pass such resolutions, and that the assessor is instructed to take any such necessary actions in the above described directive.
We need to do a roll call, both, this was introduced by me, you're sharing some of it. Second, I have you. Do a roll call, any change?
Carl Fancher?
Aye.
William Federice?
Aye.
Laurel Latice?
Aye.
Robert Prudman? Kelly Smith?
Did you give, when you come in on Wednesday, just do this, finalize this and put it on her desk? Looking for that. Thank you. Screenside Acquisition. I, it was maps and everything, yeah, I, I'm not going to, I didn't wanna make copies of them, but basically, there's about a four-acre parcel on Marcell Rock Road. And that's a big wetland up there. And these people want to buy, the Screenside Acquisition is an arm of the DDP. They don't buy large chunks of land, they buy pieces of land that are usually, not usually, they are with water horses through them. And, I, I spoke to Lee, the person who is in charge of that today, as you called me, you're gonna pass this up to the board, but I can't see how the board would object to some, of somebody selling a four-acre area, and she said, well, is it, I don't know if they allow hunting. The only hunting that you could do there is duck hunting. I mean, is that bad? So, did you see it? We can come back to that while we're talking about other stuff. I mean, it's four acres, no one will ever do anything with. You know the water, all right?
Yeah, it's a little beaver dam.
Yep. Even the waters probably have to be the beaver in it.
But DDP won't know, maybe we've done that? Like, parrot and they're hunting.
Oh, I don't know, this would just begin, it is a very small, I don't know about hunting, it's only four acres. Yeah. Just, just that we don't have any objection, we don't even have to use the word approve. And I don't, personally, I don't, I, I'm a little more scrutinizing of anything that DDP's involved in these days, but this is, nobody does.
Is that down the classroom collages, or is it possible?
All for.
Between Bull Hill and Eric Olson.
Yeah. All right. Comments, questions, minds?
Motion to accept that?
Yes. We have a second, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Moving along. I mentioned last week that, last week, I, I mean, I gave to Kelly when he, uh, I didn't forget that you were in the meeting before, last week. You're trying to forget on that. Anyway, I, I did mention that we have a screen management implementation program from SWAT, otherwise known as Gary Watershed Advisory Committee. Well, there is a, and some of you may or may remember that there's a bank center on the Matterkill, just east of the Pantry Road Bridge. And it's got, one of the neighbors really upset, he felt, he's old by the professionals, nothing to worry about. But, there's a grant, thirty-five thousand dollars for the engineer, I have to fix it, just to study, to see how much it would cost. I thought we would have to get involved, because of, it's, it's part of the local flood analysis that was done here several years ago. The, uh, we don't have to take any action, they're working with NRCS, formerly known as Soil and Water, to make that happen. So, there's no follow-up on our part, other than out of curiosity, which is why I'm on. So I closed that out for last. Okay. I had mentioned earlier that we have the makings of a proposal, it's not necessarily the, uh, highway. This is for the highway guys. Dave? You want one?
No.
Okay. All right. There's three tables here. Now, what is, well, the first one on the top shows the salaries of the employees as of March first. That's when the salaries came in. Union contract. So, it shows what we are, and it also shows the two non-union people who are part-time. And this is like, if everybody was here and working, and it doesn't count overtime. Comes out to one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty dollars. Now, we slip down to the next table. In addition to the hourly rates, and we, we also take into consideration the three percent repair contribution, the town's health insurance contribution, and the town funded deductible. And I'm only doing this to make a point that the full-time salaries, the total compensation is twenty dollars and eighty-four cents to twenty-three forty-seven. But I understand what people are saying, that it's difficult, by the way, I'm gonna come back to something. Somebody made a comment at the meeting last month, so I've been told. You can't pay anybody for twenty dollars, well, that person may pay twenty dollars, because he hasn't ever paid for health insurance or retirement. Our guys get that. So, I mean, that was an unfair remark, and it wasn't an apples-to-apples comparison. However, I understand where people are coming from. So, I'm gonna get to, get if you take our part-time employees at the salary that we have, it's forty-seven thousand dollars a year, again, if they worked a full twenty-nine, twenty-nine hours a week each of that. If you divide that forty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, about four full-timers, actually, I'm sorry, divide, divide that by four, that comes out to eleven thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. And then if you take the town's contribution off for BICO Medicare package, that's ten thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars per person. What I've been proposing for discussion, not for going on tonight, because these numbers have to be criss-ed up, even though I think they're pretty, pretty close. We should take the money that the part-timers are making and divide it up amongst the four full-time employees. That's the equivalent of about a little bit more than five dollars an hour. Now, what about the part-time employees? What I would propose, subject to board agreeing or not agreeing, is that right now, we're down a full-time person. You, you can apply forty hours a week to the part-timers, because we're not paying the full-timer, so why not pay the part-timers? But when we were at four, four people, it is, there will not be any part-timers. Now, I have to share something I find mighty interesting. There are fifteen highway departments, town highway departments in Scarry County. We are the second smallest town in the county. But we have the third largest workforce in terms of manpower. There is something very wrong with that. So I am proposing to the board that we take that money and allocate it to the full-timers. Does that mean you're gonna work a little bit harder if you're a full-timer? You bet. But you know what, if you're getting that kind of money, you should be. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Now, the one last thing. This thing with inflation and the job market is very fluid. We have a contract with the union. Okay? I don't propose we change a thing there. We already have a two-thousand-dollar repension bonus. My proposal, we may have time on this, though, is that we change that to ten thousand dollars. That is a pretty nice penny, especially in these parts, if you, if you stay for the full year. And, it doesn't hurt the part-timers so much, in fact, that we're shorthanded, but maybe when we offer this kind of money, it will open up the number of people that would be interested. So then I think this is quite generous, and it's using money that we already are using, or at least would be using. Now, is this taking into account overtime and a lot of other perks? No. So, the town would be more at risk on this too. But I can't believe that this isn't the basis, maybe not exactly the right, the exact thing, but I can't believe this is not the basis of a good opportunity for our guys.
Is that applied to me too?
Yes. Now, we, we are.
You're saying whether you work hard, just work for some?
Yes, we are. That is bizarre, but it's true. And maybe, I'll get back to you a second.
Something wrong with that?
Yes, there is, and let me tell you what I think it is. I'll tell you, I know all these guys. Sometimes have
I know them too.
Okay, good. Sometimes have three people, no full, no part-timers, and they get it done.
Oh, you're including the part-time.
No, I am including the part-time, these part-timers
Phil Travis, the real full-time.
Right, exactly, but we have an opening too for the full-timers, one full-timer. So, yeah, but I'm gonna, you know, I'm not gonna pull punches here. It, it's sort of the legacy of what we've inherited over time, and this is not gonna make some people happy. We fired people because they were family members, friends, look what happened to, when we did that with Dave's predecessor. We fired, hired people, couldn't get a job somewhere else, and be blunt about it. We need, we can upgrade the quality of people that we have working for us. Yes, we need to work a little harder, I guess, but, you know, it, it's worth something worth working for. So, I, and, and going back to the towns, okay? When you throw that in, we're the equivalent of five and a half, only Yul Bola, who's an outlier, you can't, you can't compare to that.
You can't compare to that.
No, I mean, they've got all that, everybody knows the story. And the town of Cobleskill, who also does village roads. There is nobody that I know that has
But, I was talking, saying, work hard. Work any harder than me, Dave, and Phil did this past weekend.
You worked, you busted your butt, I listened to you understand yesterday. That's a broad brush you're using there, Sean.
I know, but when you also have a guy who's gone once a month.
Yep.
And one, one, two months out of a year, supposedly.
Two months?
He's talking about leaving again.
The jewels.
I agree.
That's, that's, at this job, if, I don't put that down for any reason, the military.
Yep.
But, when we need someone, that's, doesn't work for us.
Well, but then, that's why we still want
Him or the military or anything, it's a
Yeah, but that's why we still have part-timers available to us.
They can't drive the trucks.
Why can't help that? By the way, then, then they're gonna have to be full-timers, that's the union contract that the members wanted. Not me, that's what the members wanted.
I'll just, yeah.
See?
From mine and Dave's point of view, there's, there's certain things that, like I said, this past weekend, we busted our butt.
Yes, you did.
And that was some nasty hours.
And I heard you, you, you finished it, you came back, it was, the new water came back, I mean, I heard some of the stories.
And then it rolls back up the storm.
I know, I know. So what I wanted to do is crisp this up a little bit, and then bring it back to the board next month. I mean, it wouldn't change if you, just say we agreed there to ten thousand instead of two. I mean, you, the payout is if you're here on November thirtieth, so we can work with this a little bit. And of course, it's a big chunk of change. But that big chunk, I'll have a discussion in a while, you can talk to Chuck if you'd like. Yeah, tell him we're, we're looking into it. He made a comment, Chuck, by the way, for those who don't know, he's the business agent for the King's List. Said that, we're never gonna argue with you if you wanna give the guys more money, so. And that's true. So Phil, you wanted to say something?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding right. Uh, so how would that look different, like, for each person, how much different would it be an hour, I just wanted to make sure.
Uh, roughly speaking here, five dollars and twelve, it equates to five dollars and twelve cents an hour.
Like, so instead of like sixteen, it'd be like twenty, twenty-one?
Right, but total compensation for the year, you're not gonna get that in your, every other week, your check. Part of it is on us trying to incent you to stay. And maybe if you have an opening, get somebody that's also going to stay. So. And I know Dave, you would recommend trying to get it out of equipment, I mean, if we had to, we had to, but I kinda like this better. I, I'd rather save the money for equipment and move it over if deserved, I mean, we're gonna need another big truck in a year, two or three? Or whatever. Or maybe you want to get a, a grader, you know, you swing the rolls every day, it just gets older. All right, so
I think, yeah. I don't know, it's like, see Dave get a little more.
Well, that's a second that we talked about, we just talked about.
I know.
I don't wanna hold that up. All right, that's all I have, I just, walking myself around. Anybody have anything they wanna add? Then, make the motion to review the invoices and that. All in favor? Any opposed? We think so, carry. We can talk that.
I love it, come here. I can sleep on my chair right under it, but I. I'm, 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 I'm. We have our. I like it down here. You've been wanting to get your health insurance. Every hour, some hour, the one year, so you're tired.